Thank you all. All right. So we've got a couple of different question formats. Our first round of questions that we're going to get into here are what we call the lightning round. They are yes/no questions. I'm going to ask that the candidates not give a verbal response, a yes answer. They will raise their hand. No, they will keep their hand down. Excuse me. Okay, so first question, and this is from your perspective as a school board member, obviously. No, not yet. Thank you, though. Okay, first question. Do you support mask mandates for schools? Do you support vaccine mandates? Do you support the teaching of critical race theory? Okay, there we have it. Lightning round complete. Thank you, gents. Now, we're going to transition to the candidate opening statements. So I'm going to ask each of you to take a minute and a half, introduce yourself, whatever you feel is pertinent for the folks to hear. The timer is going to give you a warning at 15 seconds, and when the flag goes up at a minute and a half, your microphone will be cut off. So I'm going to ask you to be cognizant of that. I'm going to go ahead and just start right here, David, with you, and let you go ahead.
Good evening. My name's David Doc. I usually go by Dave. I'm a longtime resident of Whitefield District 3, probably 35 years plus, with having raised our children and now our grandchildren attending District 3 schools. I've come from an accounting background. My career, I'm semi-retired, although it seems to, time gets filled with busyness. But I thought I would find time to join the race for school board because I've had some concerns. I guess this started about a year ago. Keep in mind, Whitefield District 3, I've been real impressed as far as there's a lot of positives that do occur, and there's a lot of positives that occur in our individual schools, in our students. I've talked to my grandchildren, I've talked to other students, and I've been real encouraged about the hope for the future. But about a year ago, when things were shut down and kids were attempting to learn online, it just became so frustrating for our grandchildren, other kids that I noticed. And of course, God bless my wife. She called up the school admin building and gave them a piece of her mind. If you know my wife, you don't want to get a piece of her mind. But, and I grabbed the phone and I said, "I'm going to call them and do the same thing." And then I thought for a moment, maybe I can do something different. Oh, we're cut off. Okay.
Flag wave, if you could maybe do it a little higher. I think it's out of the field of view there a little bit. All right. Gregory, your minute and a half starts now.
Good evening. Thank you all for showing up and coming. I am a public school graduate. My grandfather was actually born in Trinidad, my grandmother in Denver. So they told me stories about climbing over the mountain and watching the bridge be built. They decided to leave Colorado for some reason and went to California, but I got here as quick as I could. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration, a master's in IT, and an MBA, so I'm a little overqualified, but it did teach me how to learn. I've spent 20 years plus in the DOD Finance Biz Ops doing proposals, anything finance-related you can think of. I've done it for Lockheed Martin, Honeywell, et cetera. Started homeschooling our kids until junior high, middle school here, then they started attending James Irwin. Two of them have graduated. My oldest is a semester away from getting her teaching credential and teaching. And for the last 20-plus years, I've been a youth group leader, so I've worked closely with kids in the middle school and high school. So I see what's going on with them, and in the last year and a half, I've seen just the increase in depression and increase in suicides, and we're just not giving them the attention that they need. So that, along with all the mask mandates, the CRT and everything, caused me to run, and I swear I'd never be in politics. Never swear.
Got to be careful with that. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. So we're going to move into some policy questions at this point. Because we've only got two candidates, when we had a larger group, we had numbers assigned, and we just went randomly. With just the two of you, we'll go back and forth. And because we do have just two, I'm going to be able to ask you probably a couple of questions each, maybe even three, so that we'll give you guys a chance to talk. So for the policy question time period, they're going to have two minutes to respond to each question that they're asked. And I want to remind the candidates that once you've answered your question, if you still have time left, you're welcome to circle back to one of the questions that's already been previously asked. So feel free to jump in. So actually, in this case, whoever gets the first question will have a chance later on to circle back, so they choose. So that being said, we're going to just go alphabetically. David, I'll ask you the first question. How does the Colorado Constitution describe your authority?
For the school board, the authority, it's an oversight position. It takes care of the management of ensuring, basically, the funding, how tax dollars are wisely spent, advocate for funding, grants and so forth, oversight of the district superintendent and the kind of the strategic direction of the school district.
Thank you. Next question here for you, Gregory. Under what circumstances would you vote to terminate a superintendent in your district?
Well, the role of the superintendent is really the CEO of the school board. Excuse me, I said that wrong. He's the chief executive that the Board of Education has hired, the one employee. And if the superintendent did not carry out the responsibilities in accordance with the policy, the procedures, the contract that the superintendent has signed, any of the applicable laws, or any of the specific directives that the school board has given the superintendent, then that would be cause for termination.
Thank you. David, back to you. Parents currently are expressing the feeling that they are not being heard by their school boards. What would you do to encourage change in that arena?
I think that's very true. I've experienced some school board meetings and watched the comment process by folks visiting the school board. And it is, of course, being, I don't know if most school boards work this way, but it seems to be a one-way conversation. School boards sit, they listen to the comments of parents and other folks, and there's really not a good back-and-forth conversation going on. So I think really, the one simple answer is to create some kind of a town hall on a, maybe a monthly basis. It's tough, schedules are tough, but really, parents are key, and parents and grandparents. If they could meet in a civil manner, where you could get back-and-forth discussion, get ideas, especially ideas from people with experience, who've been through school, who have been through so many things, have good ideas as to how to proceed in the future, and then perhaps get that back-and-forth comment from the school board where they could explain maybe why they've had to make certain decisions or live by certain policies or guidelines, because sometime, a lot of people don't understand that. So I think somehow we've got to generate that kind of a community. And again, parents are key, so.
Thank you, sir. All right, Gregory. State statutes and laws mandate that programs be taught that include the promotion of the ide- excuse me, the ideology grounded in critical theory. That includes influence within programs for bullying, suicide, other student programs, as well as critical race theory. So given that these are mandated by the state, what would be your plan to influence removing them from your school district or making modifications to that?
Well, the Colorado Constitution, Article 9, Section 15 explicitly says, "Said directors shall have control of instruction in the public schools of their respective districts." So what the federal government, what the state government says, that's nice. So that's what I'd say. I don't believe we need to follow any such thing unless, of course, there's money tied to it, and then we would have to find out what our contractual obligation is to give back the money, so we do not need to fulfill that, because right now, that is not something that the majority of folks are saying that they want in the school district. And then to circle back, if I may, on the prior answer, I totally agree with Dave. I think we need to come out with something that allows the students, the parents, the teachers, all the folks who are integral in the process, to have that open discussion. I think I read somewhere, it was a long-lost book, very dusty, that iron sharpens iron. So if we could be respectful and work with one another, we can learn from one another how to teach and allow critical thought to occur with the children by getting open dialogue in the community.
Awesome. Fantastic. We've got time, so I'm going to give you guys one more question each here. And again, take the opportunity to circle back, should you choose to do so. Bible clubs have been either restricted or completely removed from schools. And by Bible clubs, I mean Bible schools, Bible-specific clubs, or Bible studies, Christian organizations for students have been restricted in many cases, or even completely taken out of schools. What in your school district's policies would you change to ensure that that's not going on if that is something occurring in your district? How would you make sure that those groups are, receive their First Amendment rights to gather and the freedom of speech?
That's a wide area. I know that in Whitefield District 3, I believe that there is freedom for Bible clubs to meet. I mean, I don't think there's been a pushback on that, although I don't think there are very many of those in practice. I would encourage it, because the answer to a lot of our problems are right there. But we've got to push the First Amendment right. I mean, yeah, you walk a fine line, because when you open up to Bible clubs, I mean, you're opening up, and you probably have to, to many different kinds of clubs, some better than others. Those need to be monitored, at least as far as being within, you know, certain regulations. But, you know, the First Amendment, talking about that there be no law establishing a religion, the second phrase, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. And I think when you look back at when the First Amendment was adopted, and it was huge amongst the signers of the Constitution that we have the First Amendment, because really, what they were looking at was the establishment of a government-run church, as had been the case in Europe and England and so forth. And I think that was the purpose behind it. So we're not talking about establishing a government-run religion in the schools. Quite the opposite. We don't want to prohibit the religious groups in the schools. And so I would totally encourage, you know, there's ways to do it. We have to be persuasive. We have to figure out, you know, when and where, and make sure it's not running against other policies. But I would certainly encourage Bible clubs anytime and anywhere.
Thank you, sir. And so the Colorado Association of School Boards is also a member of the National Organization of Public School Boards, and they have been calling on the federal government to help protect members of school boards from the quote-unquote angry mobs of domestic terrorist parents who are showing up to express their view on things. What is your reaction to that suggestion that federal oversight and law enforcement be involved? And how does that affect your thought process in being on a school board?
So I don't believe in federal policing, so that is out the board, off the table. The fact that we could have sheriffs there, great, they're protecting the building and people for getting out of control. But that's being disrespectful. And from what I've seen, I've not seen any disrespect being done at the school boards. In fact, I've seen it the other way, where the law enforcement have come in, and they've been disrespectful. So per the First Amendment, we do have that right to free speech, the right to assemble and the right to petition the government. And if the school board has been elected, it is a portion of the government, and therefore you all are entitled to come and state what's going on in a respectable manner. And I would suggest we all do that. That is why I'm running, is to be the voice for each and every one of you, and I expect each and every one of you to hold, I hold you responsible to hold me accountable. And I'm your voice in that small section, and for the district managing the superintendent. So we just need to make sure that the speech is respectful, there's decorum, and it's vital to the basis for our republic that we live in.
Fantastic. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to utilize my moderator prerogative here and ask you both one more question. And I'm going to ask that we do just one minute for your response on this. You're both going to get the same question. Feel free to tag on. But there's a challenge nationwide. I'll give you a specific example that brought me to this question. A teacher interacting with her classroom, asking her students to put away their cellphones during class. Student mouthing off back to the teacher and saying, "You can't make us," and the teacher lost their cool. Teacher lost their cool a little bit too much, I'll leave it at that. However, my point that I'm driving at here is, we've got terrible disrespect in the classroom. Students are getting away with a lot of things. Discipline seems to be going out the window, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of consequences for students who are being disrespectful and disobedient. And so my question for each of you, with a one-minute response, please, is, as a school board member, what would you do to make sure that those things are not going on in your district?
Glad you asked that question. Discipline certainly is one of the top things on my list, and we have to be consistent, obviously. I recently have gotten familiar with a program, and I've got a little bit of literature out there on my table, but there's a program, if any of you want to write this down or Google, it's called "The Leader in Me," or it's just "Leader in Me." It's based on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, and it's doing quite the opposite of the discipline problem. Obviously, you're going to have those cellphone situations or those types of issues, and boy, we got to watch it. I know teachers are under such pressure. But this program, it builds positive character. In just a nutshell, it builds such positive character with responsibility, respect for others. It creates the positive instead of the negative with regard to discipline.
Fantastic. Same question for you, sir.
Well, and I'll just finish on with what Dave was saying, that knowing that character is important, it's bringing this up with each of the children. It's having a level bar. It's having ramifications and repercussions for each and every one of your actions, but it's working with the kids. It's having them one day a week come and dress up, or once a month at an assembly, because when you feel, when you're dressed nice, you feel nice. It's showing how you respect one another. It's working with each kid to show them that they're important, because typically, the bullies are the ones who are the ones who have self-confidence issues. So how do we do that? Well, we keep working, and we have the teachers who can look and understand and point those children to these special programs, and that program, "The Leader in Me," does document and talk about how to do all that.
Fantastic. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now we're going to transition into the same format, two-minute responses to questions, and these are going to be questions more directed at character. So we'll move away a little bit from policy and go in the direction of character. And so I'm going to start with you this time, Greg, if that's okay? What guides your decision-making process? And again...
Well, in the last 10 years, I would say that I've come to know my Lord and Savior, Jesus, and so honestly, it's God. I mean, my whole way here, the whole time I've been looking at doing this, I've been He is the one that I go to, and after Him is my wife, so God, family, those are the two guiding factors in my decision-making, and morals and my basis.
Very nice. Thank you, sir. Dave, what is the main reason you decided to run for school board?
Well, now I get to finish my opening comment. Like I say, about a year ago, got frustrated, schools were shut down, trying to learn online was impossible. I witnessed that personally. And as much support as encouragement and encouragement a parent can give to their child or grandparent, in my case, and yeah, we did. I worked with my grandkids. It was fun, but, and they learned some things they probably never learned in school, but still. So we got frustrated. I went, I decided I would go to the school board meeting, and by December of last year, you couldn't go anywhere. It was all virtual, and I couldn't, I attended the school board meeting virtually. They did allow a comment. I couldn't, there was no audio, but I had pre-typed my comment, and I pasted it into their site, and they did read my comment. And of course, it had to do with the whole idea that the coronavirus, I mean, the school-age kids are not vulnerable to this virus. And I went, I don't know if anybody's heard of Hillsdale College and the Imprimis newsletter they put out. Just as I was thinking about running for school board, this thing came in the mail, and it talked that very, that very subject about the low level of susceptibility on the virus for school-aged children. So I presented that at the school board, and then, of course, I understood. I had a conversation with the district superintendent at the time, Scott Campbell, since retired, but he made me understand there were some reasons why they couldn't maintain school because of, you know, supposedly mandates from the local and state health departments that, they just couldn't get enough substitute teachers, couldn't keep some of the classrooms open. Now, I think, looking back, there probably were ways we could have worked around that. So that's kind of what I'm all about, just, just call me old-school, because I, you know, I believe in the basics.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to remind you, take the opportunity to circle back, should you like or choose to, just as a reminder. So Greg, what experience do you feel makes you a good candidate for school board and will make you effective in that role?
So I started out at 13 cleaning floors, not that that's what you do in schools, but I know what grit and determination brings you. And over the last eight years, I've run a profit-loss statement, P&amp;L, in electronics manufacturing, and the working operations manufacturing, finance, accounting, payroll, hiring, firing. So on a smaller level, I've done bits and pieces, and I manage portions of everything the school is doing, other than the classes. And so with all the pieces that I've done and put together, I think that it's put me in a place where I can at least understand what I don't know. My education has taught me to go and ask questions, find out what I don't know, get answers to it, get the right people around, get the information so that it can be pulled together, so that the team can make the right determination in what needs to be done and what direction we need to go.
You got time? Okay. Thank you, sir. Dave, what are your core values?
Well, my core values, my foundational belief is in Jesus Christ, as my Lord and Savior. I grew up in a Christian home and was basically taught, and through, even through Bible college attendance, taught a Christian or biblical worldview. And so that guides my thinking. I sincerely believe in seeking the wisdom of God as you function, trying to be not the beat-a-person-over-the-head-with-a-bible-type person, but a person who creates relationships. I really believe in those personal relationships, demonstrating good character, and really trying to push that, push that throughout our school system would be my goal, so that we can create... I mean, I understand the legal ramifications of no Bible, or, you know, biblical training in public schools. I'm not saying that, and we could only hope. But what I am saying, create a character education environment, a positive environment, where students can learn to respect each other, students can learn to just value one another, they can learn to make wise choices, and just that encouragement from a positive character. Again, I know, you know, it's easier said than done, and I live by the golden rule, do unto others as you have them do unto you. I think that's the bottom line of my core value right there.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. And Greg, what would be your strategy for implementing ideas as a board director if you're the lone voice as a proponent or objector to a policy?
Well, I'd try and get ideas from both sides of why that position is what it is, what would be a pro for it, what would be a con against it? What's the value in it? How does it benefit the student first? Does it benefit the student? Okay. Will it benefit the teacher? Does it benefit the student, the teacher, and the school district? Will it benefit all of the stakeholders, which includes the parents, the grandparents, all the residents in the community? Because the bottom line is, the school district is responsible for all residents, which is where civics comes from. It's your neighborhood. This is our neighborhood. We need to have say. So having those town halls, getting that information, once I could understand, I would then give the decision on it.
Nope, that's fine. Say what you need to say. You don't have to, you don't have to say extra if you don't need to. All right, Dave, last one for you. What role will you allow parents to make in your decision-making as a board member?
As a board member, as I've said before, parents are key. And again, I think there's a lot of value in, even if you can meet one-on-one with parents as you have opportunity, these town hall meetings that I would suggest, and maybe they're happening in certain places, but I think they're crucial. But taking in what parents are saying and trying to create that back-and-forth atmosphere of having them understand perhaps your limitations. I mean, the school boards are limited in certain things they can do, they're limited by law. But finding ways where you can work and communicate back and forth, the open communication is really the key thing, and getting parents involved. I know a lot of parents in our district that are really involved with some of the extracurricular activities, the sports programs, the marching band programs, they assist, and they're, you know, they help with equipment, or they help with, you know, transportation or whatever. But just trying to generate more and more of that as we possibly can amongst busy parents, but getting, it allows you to get their buy-in if we can understand each other.
Excellent. A little moderator privilege here. I'm going to give you each one minute to circle back to any of the six questions that we just asked. If you feel like you have anything to add, I'll start with you, Greg. And if not, no problem. I'm just going to give you one last opportunity.
So the core belief I have about the school board... So the core belief I have about the school board, excuse me, is that it's the parents and the children who we're really responsible to and for. Teachers need to be the voice of the parents in the classroom, teaching the kids. If they're going to be teaching anything that is controversial in any way, shape, or form, it should be an opt-in basis. It should not be an opt-out, or it should not be so transparent you can't see it. It has to be there, and we have to be able to have that choice. The other thing is, as Dave had alluded to, we have to have that transparency between the school board and the stakeholders, all stakeholders. I know that our school board has been decent, but you have to have that open communication and not just closed off.
Great. Thank you. Dave, one last minute on anything you'd like to circle back on what we just talked about?
Just maybe some general, general comments. I've got a long list of bullet points on issues that are prevalent everywhere. I mean, obviously, we, we know there's a whole problem with teenage suicides, and especially over this past 18 months, as that has grown. There's, there's problems with bullying, there's problems with the teen pregnancy issue is ongoing, and there's just a laundry list of things that seems like, you know, as much as parents maybe should handle a lot of those problems, yet schools, administrators, teachers, school boards seem to be forced to be involved where sometimes they don't even want to be. But regardless, we need to be. I guess the reason I pushed this "Leader in Me" program, I noticed, and I just knew to it, but I'll just read this, "88% overall decrease in junior-high behavioral incidents once the elementary school was filled with students who had experienced this program." So that was, that was huge.
Great. Thank you, guys. Okay. Again, we're good on, we're doing all right on time, so I want to go ahead and have one more quick lightning round. I've got two questions for you. Reminder, the lightning round is yes or no, no verbal responses, please. So question number one in this last lightning round, have you read the board policy in its entirety for your district? Okay? And question number two, last question. State statute in Colorado allows for school districts to run their own independent elections. And by that, I mean they are not required by law to participate in the coordinated election held in the county run by the clerk and recorder. That said, would you support your district running and controlling its own election process, including distribution and collection of ballots and ballot counting? Within your district? Okay, thank you. Okay, well, that brings us to the end. So I'm going to ask if you all here in the audience would stay seated for just a minute? We've got a couple of other announcements. Gentlemen, round of applause, if we could, for these guys. Thank you for your time. I'm going to dismiss you to get back to your tables, and then we're going to release the masses back there to you to come and get to know you and have a conversation with you.